Good evening. How's everyone this evening? Well, okay, that's well is good. Welcome to the Winslow Township Board of Education's regular board meeting. Today is Wednesday, June fifth, twenty twenty-four. Public notice of this meeting was given to all board members and associates in a notice dated January fifth, twenty twenty-four. Adequate? Any electronic notice of this public meeting has been provided specified in time, place, and manner in which this meeting is being conducted. It was advertised in the Courier-Post, posted in all schools, the administration office, the municipal building, the library, the Bartubal Center, Edgewood Acres Elmtown, and the Winslow Township Post Office. And this is our mission statement. The mission of the Winslow Township School District, a large, diverse, and growing community, is to educate all students to become independent, lifelong learners, critical thinkers, and caring and confident members of their community. The district, in partnership with the community and in a climate of cooperation and mutual respect, will provide an academic environment which values excellence and diversity, encourages students to strive for personal excellence, and assists them in acquiring the knowledge, skills, and attitudes necessary to contribute positively to a rapidly changing world. Role call, please.
Mr. Askew?
Present.
Ms. Redden?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Present.
Ms. Neanders?
Present.
Ms. Peterson?
Present.
Mr. Shaw?
Present.
Ms. Thomas?
Ms. Thomas will be absent this evening?
Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
Present.
And Ms. Pitts?
Present.
We have a call.
Thank you, Ms. Paul. Can we stand for the pledge of allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, and for the freedom and justice for all.
District goals for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. Student achievement: Continue to implement best practices for delivering instruction to students utilizing all available and appropriate instructional models. This shall include: A) Develop plans to increase the graduation rate; B) Decrease chronic absenteeism; C) Increase benchmark scores in fourth grade ELA end-of-year, accountability for all district staff, and stakeholders. Number two: Increase parent caregiver engagement in education. A) Provide opportunities for two-way communication with district stakeholders; B) Implement the climate culture survey; Three: Market our strengths and achievements to all stakeholders to increase capacity for greater parent caregiver community support. A) Work with communications consortium; B) Continue with our public relations marketing plan; C) Continue to work with the various advisory committees in the district; D) Focus on refining our communication methods and messages to better market our school district.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Moving now, board members, top of page two of boards and presentations.
Madam President, there will be no presentations this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Potte. Correspondents?
Madam President, we have none for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Boyle. At this time, board members, I'm asking that we approve the minutes from our previous board meetings. I'm asking for approval of the minutes from our regular board meeting, which took place Wednesday, May twenty-second, open session, and Wednesday, May twenty-second, closed session. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting scheduled on Wednesday, May twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, open session, and Wednesday, May twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, closed session.
Does he have a second?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Martin, second by Mr. Shaw. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Askew?
Yes.
Ms. Redden?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Neanders?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
The motion has carried.
Thank you, Ms. Boyle. Moving now, board members, our board committee reports. Our athletic committee, I think in our brown folders we see what Mr. Thomas has submitted to us, which is basically your interview, which is pretty detailed. And so I would hope that we will all take a look at it. And at some point later, if we have any questions, we could check with Mr. Thomas. Moving now to the Citizens Advisory Committee report. Will there be a report out of Citizens Advisory Committee?
No report, meeting tomorrow evening at seven P.M. in the administration building.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Will there be a report out of the Education Committee?
No report, will be meeting at the end of the month.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Will there be a report out of the Marketing Committee?
The Marketing Committee hasn't met yet for the month. Will be meeting the third Wednesday as usual. Ms. Pitts, I didn't know if you wanted to continue our discussion during the committee report or during all business?
All business.
Okay. I'll see what for them.
Okay, thank you. Will there be a report out of our Operations Committee?
None at this time, Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Redden. With regards to the Policy Committee, meaning we did meet yesterday, with Mr. Davis, Dr. Potte, Mr. Shaw, and Mr. Askew, with regards to one specific policy, and that was eighty-six fifty-one. As you recall, it was the community transportation, and we're still working through that. And we're going to, later this month, meet again to pull it all together and be able to present it to the board, perhaps for first reading. I'm at the top of page three. I'm asking for a motion to approve the Superintendent's Report that begins at the top of page three and ends at the bottom of page four. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept the student Superintendent's Report that begins on page three, letter A through seventeen, and letter B on page four.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Martin, second by Mr. Shaw. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Askew?
Yes.
Ms. Redden?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Neanders?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Present.
And Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Thank you, Ms. Boyle. Board members, at this time, I'm asking for a motion to approve. I'm at the top of page five. Motion to approve the Business Administrative Board Secretary's Report that begins on page five and continues through to the bottom of page eight. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept the Business Administrative Board Secretary's Report with letter A and letter B, one through?
Somebody lock the doors.
Sixteen, on page eight.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Martin, second by Mr. Shaw. Any further comments or questions?
Pardon me?
Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Askew?
Yes.
She gets right on, must say that's what he left, Vicky Martin.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Neanders?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Thank you, Ms. Boyle. Board members, moving now to the top of page nine. I'm asking for a motion to approve the Personnel Report as it begins at the top of page nine and continues through to the bottom of page ten. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept the Personnel Report, starting with letter A, one through eight, on page eight. I mean, ten, I'm sorry.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Martin, second by Mr. Shaw. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Askew?
Yes.
Ms. Redden?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Neanders?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Thank you, Ms. Boyle. Moving now, board members, to our addendum.
Ms. Peterson, before you move on to the thing about the just like the comic in reference to the retirement of Dr. John Mills.
Yes.
As all of you well know, Dr. Mills has been a loyal employee of the Winslow Township School District for many years. And I would like to publicly thank him for his service, his commitment, his enthusiasm that he brings to his position. We don't miss Dr. Mills, but we do wish him well in his retirement and whatever new endeavor he will be embarking upon. We truly don't miss John Mills here in the Winslow Township.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
For the Winslow Motown Mondays?
Yes. Absolutely.
So have this song.
All right.
The finale, that'd be, that's his final, finale tour.
Okay. Looking forward to it. Looking forward to it. All right, turning our attention to our addendum. I believe we've all had an opportunity to read through it. So therefore, at this time, I'm asking to approve the Business Administrative Board Secretary's Report as it appears on our addendum, beginning on page one, continuing through to the middle of page two. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept Business Administrative Board Secretary's Report. It begins on page one, letter A through five, on page two.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Martin, second by Mr. Shaw. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Askew?
Yes.
Ms. Redden?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Neanders?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Thank you, Ms. Boyle. Moving now, still on the addendum. I'm asking for a motion to approve the Superintendent's Report as it appears on our addendum, begins and ends on page two. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept the Superintendent's Report, the bottom of page two. Letter A.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Martin, second by Mrs. Shaw. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Askew?
Yes.
Ms. Redden?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Neanders?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Thank you, Ms. Boyle. Moving now, board members, I am at the top of page eleven, Open Public Records Act. Ms. Boyle, before we go into that, I just have a question on number four here. Mr. Carlos Lopez Rodriguez, where it says document requested now his dates, he's asking for document from twenty twenty-three back to twenty oh-two?
I believe twenty twenty-three dash oh-two was either a, was a bid number.
Okay.
So he's requesting documents from that.
Okay, thank you.
So we received, Madam President, we received and responded to four of these. The first one, Brian Jones from Quagian, they wanted a copy of the postage machine equipment lease for the mailing equipment at our facility. That was approved and given, supplied to the gentleman. Number two, I'm just going to say the BP, they wanted contracts of Winslow Township School District, all change orders submitted for the year twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-two invoices from, that we would have given to Niram or received from Niram Inc. To the Winslow Township School District for year twenty twenty-three and twenty-two, and certified payrolls for the past two years that Niram Inc. submitted as proof of prevailing U.H.P. Those records were denied because we do not have a vendor by that name. Carolyn Swan from Records Management Group, Management TRM Group, requested information for each educator within the district as of twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, the name, the years of service in the district, salary, position, email, and phone number. Everything was provided with the exception of the phone number due to the, we use the privacy, and it's exempted if it's a unlisted number. So I'm not certain what it was, so we err on the side of caution. Everything else was compiled and submitted. And Mr. Carlos Lopez Rodriguez wanted the twenty twenty bid number twenty twenty-three oh-four, and the bid was data management and assessment system. They requested the bid tabulation and scoring sheet for use for evaluating vendors, the winning vendors proposal, any relevant purchase orders, and the ordered contract. Everything was provided with the exception of the bid tabulation sheet. In a bid, you just go low, low quote, or the lowest response of the vendor. So there was no evaluation of it in those clothes.
Okay.
And that concludes those second listed.
All right, thank you, Ms. Boyle. Moving now, top of page twelve, informational items.
Yes, Madam President, I just have a few items as reminders for the board and members of the community. Starting Tuesday, June the eleventh, at nine thirty, School Six will have their sixth-grade promotion exercise. Wednesday, June the twelfth, School Five will have their promotion exercise. And as you know, the middle school will have the eighth-grade promotion exercise starting at six o'clock. Those school board members who will be attending, we ask that you arrive no later than five thirty. We normally have space in the back of the gym for those of you who are going to attend where the ladies will normally provide. School board members with flowers, all right? Thursday, June thirteenth is the high school graduation. As you know, we try to get everyone here as soon as possible. So we're asking everyone to please meet here at the administration building by five o'clock for any preparation that you may need. There will be a bus here to transport everyone over to the high school. There is a room designated, of course, for those of you who would like to partake in a meal prior to graduation and congregate with our guests from the mayor's office as well as other elected officials. With the year winding down, of course, that Thursday, June thirteenth, is the last day of school for staff, excuse me, for students, the fourteenth is the last day for staff for closeout. And that concludes the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year.
Okay.
That concludes my information items for this evening.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Potte. Before we move into old business, I'm going to pick up Dr. Potte on what you said about concluding the year. And at this time, I noticed that our student representative did come in. Ms. Tyasia Doyle. And Ms. Doyle, would there be anything that you want to share with us since this is your last meeting with us?
Yes, of course. So yes, as you said, this is my last meeting. So I would just first like to just say thank you for the opportunity for me to even be sitting here, to come here at the meetings and speak. And yeah, like as I said, me and Ms. Pitts, we had a conversation like last week. And she kind of asked me like about my experience at Winslow. And I just had all the things to say, you know? I've been here since kindergarten, so yes, I have been at Winslow my whole life. So I just had all the good things to say. And like I said, I'm just appreciative to even have had the opportunity to be on the, to sit amongst you all. And I'm just very excited for graduation and all that. But yes, I had all the good things to say. My experience at Winslow has been great. Winslow has a lot to offer. And as long as you take up what you can from Winslow, you will have the opportunity to be successful. And I feel as though that I got a lot from Winslow.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm going to link in there with everything.
All right. Well, Tyasia, we just want to, we don't want you to leave empty handed. So if you will stand for a minute, we have two things that, oh, yes, yes. Ms. Doyle, come around.
Come on in.
Come on around.
So we can, uh?
So we can. We would like to present you with two things. One, a resolution for you. And I just, it's brief, and I'll take a short time to just read it. And the resolution says, honoring student representative Tyasia Doyle for service on the Winslow Township Board of Education. Whereas Ms. Doyle has served his distinction on the Board of Education, and whereas through her leadership, the Winslow Township Board of Education has gained fresh insights into student concerns, student priorities, and what is on the mind of young people in the community. And whereas they have further contributed to the community by serving as a valuable spokesperson, sharing the student perspective at board meetings. And whereas Ms. Tyasia Doyle's exemplary commitment to fellow students and the school district has promoted clear communication between the board, the district administration, and the student body. And I'm going to skip over a couple of wherases. So therefore, be it resolved that the Winslow Township Board of Education recognizes Ms. Tyasia Doyle's dedication and commitment to advancing educational opportunity and open communication between the board, district administrators, and the student body. And be it further resolved that the members of the Winslow Township Board of Education extend their best wishes to Ms. Tyasia Doyle in all of her future endeavors. Signed by Cheryl Pitts, president. Oh, yes, and then it's just a little happiness for you.
Thank you, thank you all.
Now, you have her nameplate down there, Ms. Doyle, right?
Yes.
It's yours to take with you.
Okay.
All right.
I have retired my nameplate.
Not unless next year's student representative has the same name. Recycle it. No, that is, that is for you to keep among all the other awards you received this year. And the administration, of course, the school board and administration, we wish you well, Ms. Doyle. If there's anything that we can do to assist you, please feel free to call upon us.
And I appreciate that, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Moving now, while we're moving into old business. Board members, old business, we came to discuss at this time. And I know that Ms. Neanders is going to speak to us about Juneteenth, but since June eighth comes before Juneteenth, I'm going to just draw our attention to the email that Mr. Neanders sent to us with regards to June eighth, and I'm going to recommend, I'm going to take the recommendation, certainly because of various schedules that we really do not have sufficient amount of board members to cover a whole day. So therefore, I am, with your permission, board members, I'm simply going to contact Chisofers to let them know thank you so much, that, but however, this year we will not have a table. But board members, that does not prevent us from certainly going over there that day because it is from twelve to eight. So would there be, would there be any objection? Would there be anyone who would oppose that? Okay, thank you. Moving on now, Ms. Neanders, Juneteenth, where are we?
As far as I am concerned, I kind of wanted to do a keep it simple approach. I mean, we've, we've all kind of attended vendor events before and bin vendors. And it's certainly a busy day, and we have a limited amount of time to catch people's attention. And I think the best way, again, in keeping with the spirit of marketing our district, is to put together something that people can take with them as they may not have the time to obviously, you know, so I would hope that people would send off with us. But we appreciate that there's a lot of exhibits going on that day. So with Dr. Potte tell, I've asked him for some information. I plan on putting a brochure together that we can also recycle for our website for Winslow Family Day, you know, something that we can use as a marketing material throughout the year. So it will serve multiple purposes. I know I had spoken with you about that you had already purchased the giveaways for the table, so thank you for that.
Thanks to Mr. Thomas. He's supplying quite a few giveaways for, for that day.
So I mean, that's pretty much all I have. I know I've heard from some board members already who may or may not have availability. We haven't nailed down the schedule yet, but that's kind of how it's looking so far.
Okay. All right, so moving there, but what we, you do know that they're going to contact Ms. Pennock to let her know exactly the time we want the tent and the table for, et cetera. Also, in addition to that, Ms. Peterson, will we, will we be going through with your suggestion with regards to having a brief video?
We are.
Okay, so folks will have that show.
And I can link it to all of the board members beforehand, probably on Tuesday, so they can read it.
Excellent. So the table is going to look pretty great. One of the things I wanted to share with us, and I thought it was, I just think it's a great idea here again. It comes from our very energetic member, Mr. Thomas. And he has suggested, and I agree, that for, in light of, I'm going to say goodwill ambassador, he has suggested that we have our mascot that day to go around, hand out some of the informational items that we will be having on our table. And I spoke to Dr. Potte about that with regards to, perhaps there's a student who would like to do that only for about two hours, from about one thirty to three, to three thirty. And a few of his board members are going to offer that student for those two hours a hundred dollars. We're offering fifty dollars an hour. Because here again, folks, it's June, and as I understand, that uniform is hot. And someone has suggested, well, maybe whatever student the administration picks, maybe they can do it without a head. But Dr. Potte said, no, that'll be a pigeon, it won't be an eagle. Hopefully, we can get a student, or, or again, maybe two students. Maybe one student can just do it for the two hours, or two students can do an hour apiece. In any event, we're offering fifty dollars an hour. We're total of a hundred dollars for that. For that mascot. Okay, all right. So we, are there any questions about Juneteenth Day? Any questions at all?
I just wanted to confirm, Mrs. Pitts, I know you had said Mrs. Peterson has a generator, so would I need to check with the township to make sure that that's?
Absolutely, the fire department, absolutely.
Just make sure.
Yes.
Any further questions about Juneteenth Day? No, looks like we're going to go forward with it. Okay, all right. Now, that's old business, any further old business? All right, hearing the new business, would there be any new business?
Yes.
Could I just ask a question?
Yes, Dr. Potte.
Ms. Doyle, are your, are your parents here?
Yes.
Oh, you know.
I saw, I recognize them, I can't be in there. I didn't want them not to know that we had acknowledged your daughter. We presented her with a gift. I don't know if you want to rerun, however. But we have presented your daughter with a gift, resolution from the board, acknowledging her for her participation. Acknowledging her for her participation. We truly, we truly appreciate her being a part of the school board and representing the high school. And we wish her well in her future endeavors. And we are here to support her. If there's anything we can do as she move on, please feel free to call.
Okay, thanks, I appreciate it.
All right, moving now, again, would there be any new business, board members?
Yes, Madam President.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Yes.
On Friday, May thirty-first, I attended Strauss Espein Associates Thirty-Sixth Annual Education Policy and School World Seminar. The seminars that I took were Artificial Intelligence in Today's Education and Environment, the First Amendment, and the Schools' Ever-Changing Landscape, and is the student our district's responsibility? I must say that Strauss Espein does an awesome job with presentations, and it is very nice that we are a part of that group. I just wanted to share that with the board.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. I believe most of us here have attended at least once when you, yes, the Strauss Espein's presentation. All right. If there's any other new business at this time, board members?
I had one, I know, I'm sorry.
Okay, Ms. Neanders?
I kind of had a thought, and I wanted to put it on the board radar, especially considering we have that wonderful presentation last board meeting with the Teacher of the Year Awards. In light of that, in light of the board retreat that's coming up, something that I wanted to put on our radar was teacher retention. You know, I know that we've had this discussion before. It's a teacher's market, you know, but all districts are kind of feeling the pinch and the movement. I just want to make sure that as a district, we're doing everything we can to keep those wonderful teachers, especially hearing some of the stories that we did. Yeah, truly heartwarming, and we have some of the best teachers in the district. So kind of in that vein, I wanted to put in a request for some information just to kind of give the board an idea of what we're looking at and possibly taking that information into our retreat. An aggregate report of reasons staff have left over the past three years, one is student resignation. The number of staff resignations versus how many have actually completed an exit interview. And just making sure that all staff have been offered exit interviews when they have resigned. And just making sure that all staff have been offered exit interviews when they have resigned.
Okay. So just...
I'll, I'll have that information available now. Mrs. Neanders, you say you would like to have that for our retreat?
Yes, by the way, yes.
Okay, I'll compile that information. I'll sit down with Mr. Davis, and, uh, we'll put the information together and have it available for the retreat.
Thank you.
Okay, and, um, again, speaking of the retreat, board members, you know, we usually hold it on a Saturday in August, and, uh, just if you could get to me to let me know, um, which Saturday or Saturdays are, would be good for you so that I, we can at least, uh, be able to schedule this certainly by the end of July, okay?
Well, Mrs. Pitts, I believe we've already lost two Saturdays, correct? One will be Family Day, and one, Dr. Potte has said he's not available.
The first, yes, the first Saturday of August I'm not available, but the others I'm available.
Okay, that's fine, but with regards to Family Day, I don't see that we would lose it, and I'll tell you why, uh, how I feel. Family Day doesn't begin until two P. M. Our retreat usually goes from nine until one. And if indeed, certainly, um, my thought about that, Ms. Neanders, is, um, if, and certainly then, we usually get there before that time to, um, to set up. And so my thought is to have members from the Citizens Advisory Committee. If indeed, that should be the, the, uh, Saturday, then we would have members from the C A C to fill in for us at that table until we get there.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
That's, that's if you select that Saturday.
That's right, that's right.
Which you're going to have.
Right, exactly. So just a reminder, board members, again, we're heading towards the end of June, and you know, we have a responsibility of evaluating our superintendent. And so I would make sure that, uh, when we go into our system, that we've completed it because we will be evaluating him at our executive session, um, after our June twenty-sixth meeting. All right? Okay, and Dr. Potte has completed his portion. Now, any other new business, though? Moving now to public comment, Mr. Wade?
Okay, I usually fit into the old business. To the public comments, the...
But, Mr. Wade, let me, let me pause for a minute. Ms., um, Ms. Ball, is there anyone signed up?
Uh, Ms. Sherman?
No.
I think we still have to open, though.
Okay. Mr. Wade? Yes?
The Winslow Township Board of Education highly values the input of citizens in making important decisions that affect the children of our community. We also believe in the rights of citizens to observe board meetings. To ensure that all of our citizens have the opportunity to attend school board meetings and offer comment, and to ensure that the Board can conduct the important business of the district, we ask that the speakers follow the guidelines for making public comments. The Board President or Board Secretary will recognize individuals in the audience who wish to make comment on the public comments on the agenda items. Please respect the following procedures. One, all members of the public attending school board meetings must treat each other, and the Board would respect. Two, state your full name and address. Three, please limit your comments to four minutes. Four, submit your questions to the Board of Education with your name, address, and telephone number where you can be contacted. Your questions will be answered within a reasonable time. Five, individuals overriding citizen comment are not permitted to make personal attacks on any district employee, board member, or other testifier or member of the public.
Thank you, Ms. Wade. At this time, board members, I'm asking for a motion to approve our moving into public comment.
Motion to move into public comment.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Martin, second by, uh, Mr. Shaw. All in favor?
Aye.
Any names? Thank you. Since we had no one who had signed up for public comment, and no one is in wait.
Any kind of waiting?
No one's waiting. Therefore, board members, at this time, I'm asking for a motion to adjourn, uh, public comments at this time.
Motion to adjourn, public comment.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Martin, second by Mr. Shaw. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We are back into, um, looking at our regular agenda. And so therefore, board members, since Dr. Potte has informed me that we have no executive session this evening, so therefore, board members, at this time,